Commission comments, bids and contracts. Do we have any unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of agreements for professional engineering services, Fairlawn Court, stormwater improvements, Brookview Drive, Gateway Drive, stormwater improvements.
Okay, I've got two small engineering projects to get approval for to start the design on, Fairlawn Court and Woodway Court. Fairlawn Court is a road, we need to do replacement of an inlet and an inlet and replacement of an outlet pipe. And we added to this project a small little great inlet on Woodway Court, just kind of up the road from Fairlawn, while we're in there, do two at the same time, get a little better overall price to do two. So Fairlawn Court would be a project that we would like to do a mill and fill on that road this year, so we want to get that part going right away. And then Woodway Court, it wouldn't have to happen right away, it could be next year, but do the design, get it done now. So that's the first one, and that one is with Cook, Flat and Strobel. And the price on that is seventeen thousand and thirteen dollars. And CFS, they did the design for the South Liberty Road box culvert about a year ago. And the next one is Brookview Drive and Gateway Drive, and this area is right at that intersection. We had, I think it was 2016, the spring of 16, we had some pretty heavy rains and had some flooding in that area. We had CMPS do just a quick analysis of that area to see what the capacity of the pipes was, and they found that some of the pipes are inadequate. So we're doing, we're utilizing CMPS to do the design of basically a replacement system to figure out what needs to be done to address the flooding issues and come up with a design that would fix that. And that project, we don't really have a target date for construction, it could happen this year if things work out right. We do have some funding, we can call it just miscellaneous stormwater funding in the 908 account under the sales tax, that if the funding is there, depending on what the design is, we would probably do it this year or it could go to next year. So, and that one, like I said, is with Central Missouri Professional Services for twelve thousand six hundred ninety dollars. And I'd recommend approval of both of these engineering agreements.
So that Brookview and Gateway, that's just a real small area. Is that going to take care of it?
If you look at that...
I can't see the terrain and however thing is there, but if that's...
There's two inlets on Brookview, and it's a little bit of an odd situation, there's two pipes, two smaller pipes under the road, there could be a utility, a water line or something in the way, and it was built like that. And then under Gateway Drive, down below there, there's a larger crossroad pipe, so we'd analyze that whole system through there, just make sure the property on the corner wouldn't flood again.
Okay. Making sure we took care of everything that we really need to along there.
Yeah.
I know we've talked to some people that have had issues there, didn't know if that was going to necessarily help, that's just going to help it getting under the road.
Yeah, it would keep it from backing up in the inlets and running to... What happens is the inlet backs up and then it runs to the yard of that house on the corner and goes into the garage, just the way the street is, the curb has looked right there. So ideally, we'd have the new inlets and the new pipes designed to handle that capacity or have that capacity. And then there's the pipe under Gateway, it's right at capacity with the storm that they analyze. So it might be that what we do here, and then we can make some adjustments to the inlet of that pipe, we'll be fine, we may have to replace that pipe under Gateway, we'll just see how the design unfolds.
Hope it doesn't cause problems farther down.
Is that the big pipe there on Gateway?
Yeah, it's about a, might be a three or four footer, plastic pipe.
We've got a lot of issues downstream of that one on where that house sits there, and I mean, are they going to put some head walls in there? I mean, you increase the flow, you're going to increase the problem downstream.
If we get into that pipe, we would have to address the downstream bank along that house. A nice way to handle these is to design the structure so it's basically a pass-through, it doesn't impede any flow, doesn't do anything, it just passes through like normal. We did that over in the Meadowbrook Estate subdivision, so when you do that, you hopefully keep the velocity down so you don't have the erosion like you can do with a smaller pipe and it's flushing through real fast. So, but that'll all come together through the design process and we'll decide what the best plan is. I know, Chris, you alluded to, Jeff, you said, you know, flooding issues and whatnot in the Gateway Brookview area. A little downstream of here, there's been some problems, not so much flooding of properties, just the creeks filling up with debris and just washing out banks and things like that. What we do here, I don't think would hurt or help that downstream, that would be kind of a separate issue that we'd have to address. We do have, and if we can start the design on it this year, some of that additional stormwater funding, we'd like to do some analysis of detention in just downstream of here. And on that vacant, or that empty lot that we own, that used to be the Lagoon, that would be an area where we do some stormwater detention and working on possibly doing an engineering agreement on that, too. That would be separate from this, this is just an isolated area here to correct.
So this Fairlawn project's a lot bigger than what you described was an inlet and a pipe, because I'm seeing work on Westview and other stuff here.
Actually, we wouldn't do anything on Westview, there's a little over there. The Fairlawn Court, it's, that's probably more driven by the fact that the street's falling apart, we need to do the pavement work. There is some water, the water doesn't get away very good, doesn't drain good out of the cul-de-sac, so we'd add an inlet in that area, but it's just replacing a system that's in there right now.
So that's all that that project is, is just that, a box and a pipe?
Fairlawn, we would add another inlet. The low spot in that cul-de-sac isn't really where the inlet is, it's a water pond, it just doesn't drain out. Probably have to add another inlet there.
So what are they designing that the cost is so high?
Well, we have the other spot as well, Woodway Court, so there's two locations.
So what's the total project cost?
For construction?
Well, no, for just, so I guess I'm just kind of curious, the design was about seventeen thousand dollars, so...
Yeah.
I mean, the project doesn't seem like, I mean, unless I'm just missing something, the project doesn't seem like the cost of the project's going to be that much.
Yeah, I mean, it just depends on to what extent we go with the engineering on it. The Woodway Court, it has to go between two houses, maybe a little tricky getting the inlet in, just with the way the driveways are. And the engineering companies, we give them the project, they present the proposal and kind of figure out approximately how much time they think they'll have in it. It's a not to exceed amount, you know, ideally we'll come in a little bit under, we typically do on these smaller jobs. I kind of looked over that and compared, I compared the two and just kind of looked at the hours they had in there. And it's, to me, it seemed reasonable to compare it similar to other smaller projects we've done.
So is this a hundred thousand dollar project, or...
For construction?
Yeah.
I don't really know right now until we get the design done. I would estimate Fairlawn would be somewhere in the twenty-five, thirty-five range, depending on to what extent we go with curb and drainage work to get things to drain where they need to in the cul-de-sac, and how much extra curb we have to replace.
We have a master plan for the Westview Heights area, what we're trying to achieve. I mean, just looking at this map, I mean, a lot of these blue lines, I assume, are just drainage areas. I know there's problems all over.
We, good question. We haven't really, when we get into the subdivisions, we like to do the whole thing at once. In the past, that has proven to be a little too much to handle, just one contractor, one project, as evidenced by the problems we've had this year. We're approaching Westview Heights, just because it's so big, kind of a piecemeal basis. We've done all of Bagman Drive on the west side of Westview Drive. We have another project getting ready to take to construction this year on South Brooks Drive, that would be kind of the lower east to west road in the Westview Heights area, addressing two of the locations, and then there's a third and fourth to the west that we would do a design on, possibly start this year.
We also did that for Westview.
We did the main drag coming in from Big Horn. You know, it's, it's just too big to really tackle this one huge project, and so we've kind of done it piecemeal as needed, depending on condition of systems, roads, as we're doing overlays and things like that. If you look at a map of the whole subdivision, there's going to be, after we get done, I would call the Fairlawn and Woodway more isolated areas, not bigger systems like what we're going to have on South Brooks when we do those two projects there this year. Once we get done with South Brooks, we're probably more looking at just more little isolated situations where we just kind of pick up an inlet here or there as we're doing, or need to do an overlay of the road. And we'll just kind of pick area, do the stormwater work piecemeal once we get done with the South Brooks area. So...
It just seems like that the whole subdivision is over capacity, and I mean, pipe is going to help, but I know that box there at Scrugg Station, and, oh, right there where Brooks comes in, I mean, that thing's capacity all the time.
The one on Scrugg Station, there's the inlet or there's a, oh, the box culvert?
Yeah, I mean, there's a box and there's a drainage culvert underneath there, I mean, it don't take much for that thing to be plumb full.
That's coming from actually...
I realize that.
Yeah, it's coming into Westview.
Right.
We have, with the newer developments along Old Roman Road, the Kaufman Development, the Tana Development, there is required stormwater detention on those to prevent any future capacity issues. And then we're just trying to address what we have in there now and get things to flush through and not back up. That's what the new box culverts and pipes being done on is out brooks. So we're kind of, we're kind of stuck with dealing with the situation we have and get everything through without causing backups into people's basements, that's the issue right now. Part of the two developments, like I said, there's detention on those to address that. There is, I think, some ability to add some additional detention if we want to on the lower parts of those developments. It wouldn't be necessarily at the developer's cost, it'd be more at our cost to decrease What they're going to do won't increase, it'll just keep it the same. If we can do some additional things to actually lower it, that would help in Westview, but what we're designing right now addresses what's there now, and it'll flush the system through without causing any backups.
Guys, got any more questions?
No, we just hate stormwater. It's a pain. We're, I don't know, we've spent quite a bit on it, so these are small projects, hopefully we can get them kind of resolved. But...
There's lots of small projects in Westview, though, and they all add up. We've been working on that for what, ten years?
Yeah.
Probably.
We've never started or stopped, I think it's just continued. We started in 2007, we got just a small little grant through DNR for stormwater work, and we started on Shadow Court, that was the first one we did. And overall, the whole county's doing more projects specifically for that, and I'd say up to now, we're probably, I haven't done a count of how many inlets we've installed, but I bet it's a couple hundred, so we've done a lot.
Yeah, we had more money in this sales tax cycle for it, too, specifically.
We added more, yeah.
So how's that money holding up?
It's fine, I mean, we're getting done what we kind of planned on, and you're always going to have little isolated things that come up from time to time, Fairlawn Court is a good example. The pavement's falling apart, we need to do something with the pavement, but we don't want to go in and do that and leave the stormwater like it is, we need to address that, too, while we're in there, and we're just kicking a, you know, an issue down the road for a future, somebody to deal with later, so it just kind of, these little isolated things pop up from time to time, and we have the funding to be able to deal with that. Now, South Brooks, that project ended up being a little bit larger than what we planned on. We didn't have the money to do it last year when that pipe was failing, so we had to push it to this year. And that's, that's why that one didn't get done right away, but that was a little bit bigger, some of these little small inlet jobs are relatively simple to do, and you can do them as isolated projects.
I'm fine with it.
I move that we sign the agreement with Cook, Flat, Strobel engineers for the Fairlawn project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we sign the Brookview Gateway agreement with Central Missouri Professional Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you get that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Subdivision street acceptance.
Okay, we have two on the list. And they are, you should have a, two plaits showing the streets, and the first one is in the Kaufman subdivision, and this is an extension of Kenview Drive and Sheridan Drive. And this plat was actually done several years ago, back in the seventies, and Kenview and Sheridan were not completed, so I highlighted the areas that Ken Kaufman did this year. And what happened is that property was owned by him and his siblings, and I think originally the project was started by his father, and he acquired the siblings' interest in the property and is now proceeding with full development of some of that property, and this is just an extension of roads that had already been planted. And so I'd recommend approval of accepting Kenview Drive and Sheridan Drive on a one-year interim period, personal removal only, and then after that one-year period is up, we'll do a final inspection, and if there's any deficiencies, they'd have to correct those before we take it fully into the system. And then also, another little, small little subdivision out off of Elston Road, northwest of town, Arthur Gruce is the developer of that, and it's L and C Estates, and the road is case in court. And that, too, would be on a one-year interim period, and they would have to address any deficiencies at the end of the one-year period before we take it fully. So recommend approval of both of those court orders, accepting those roads into the system for a one-year period.
So does L and C, are there houses in there already, or...
I believe there's two, maybe a third going right now. This one was done a little differently, he originally was planning on it just removing gravel and changed his mind as he sold a lot or two, it was kind of, people wanted it to be paved, and so he had plans growing up to actually pave it. Wasn't too much of a project, it's a short little cul-de-sac road. So we worked with him to get that through to where it would be acceptable to the county.
Any stormwater in it?
There's none. There's a pipe, just an entrance pipe, that sits in the ditch on Elston Road. It's all either sheet drains or small little ditches on the side of the road. There's no curb and gutter, it's just a two-lane asphalt road in the shoulder. The lots are big enough not to require curb and gutter.
So Kenview and Sheridan, kind of an odd little intersection where Sheridan intersects Kenview there. I mean, I assume that's all already done, but just, I don't know, just the way they come together seems a little odd, is Kenview planned...
The leverage on that, phase two was actually approved, and he'll start construction next year on that. And that actually would take Kenview all the way over to Murnee and intersect with Murnee Drive.
Okay.
So that'll explain a little bit why that's currently like it is. And then his...
He's done a lot of the dart work over there already, so...
And then his future phases would complete Sheridan on down and around, and there'd be development to the south.
Oh.
And its phase two actually adds the stormwater detention as part of that, that phase. Any more questions?
Erosion control measures in place and stuff, so we don't have to deal with mud and different things.
I don't think it's been seeded, I'll have to double check. That would be something that would have to be done before we take it fully. There is a couple inlets, I think there's two inlets on Sheridan, not a whole lot of stormwater work required, just the way the road's draining currently. The further section, the next section thing, too, there would be a lot more drainage work involved, and so there would be definitely temporary erosion control measures absolutely necessary, and then the future things as well. And that's figured in, like with the stormwater detention, and then riprap and items like that at the inlet pipes.
Just don't want mud on the streets to become an issue for us to have to clean up when the subdivision isn't complete, so...
Yeah, that's, that's always something that we have to deal with. There's actually a development right now that they didn't process through, just because we're having that issue with this street that was built, so they'll have to correct that before we'll even proceed to this phase.
So I'm okay with doing an interim. If there becomes issues, then, then we can choose not to accept the street, so...
Yeah, it really puts it on the developer to make sure it's one-hundred percent compliant with our requirements when we take it.
If they sell a lot, you don't have much say in that, though. Somebody else comes out there and gets mud all over the road.
That's something that we have to address through our building permit section, and it's, it's always a, an issue in there, especially now.
Oh, yeah. In the spring.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions.
Move that we approve Kenview, Sheridan Drive, Kaufman subdivision, and L and C Estates in Elston. I move that we approve and sign the court order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have no idea.
I don't know.
Here to help. No, this is actually, a couple of things, remember last year, we had the issue with the door to South Court, the truck hit it. That caught, well, we had to shut that door down, had to call in some repairs, while that door was broke, the other door, the only door we had operational actually broke, and Dooley came in and fixed both of them at the same time, so that ran us about forty-nine hundred dollars. That brings us up, if we, if we let it go like that, that's going to bring us up real close to our six thousand dollar mark. So what I'm requesting is, is that we take that forty-nine hundred dollar and mark it as an emergency purchase, since it was an emergency, and then move the forty-nine hundred dollars from contingency to pay that, because it's coming out of the 2019 budget. If we don't do that, then our facilities line item is going to start out with five thousand dollars bill right off the top. And I'm okay with that, if that's what you want to do, but we will run out of facility money before the end of the year.
Well, it was an emergency, I went, I went in there, I got the email, you see this FedEx truck sitting there?
Oh, that guy was freaking out.
But... The door crunched, and it's like...
If you, if you don't want to do the contingency money, that we will be back for more money.
So I guess I'm confused as to what happened, so FedEx hit our door, or the door came down on FedEx?
The door wasn't all the way up and FedEx hit it.
So we should be getting insurance money back?
No, that was our...
I haven't heard anything about.
I mean, they knew about it.
So FedEx truck, FedEx truck hits our door, and that's not their fault?
We didn't raise the door all the way up, it was our employee's fault.
I'll tell you what, the clearance on that is what, maybe six inches?
Maybe two inches.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, it's damn close. I, when I looked, I looked at that and I thought, well, how the heck did it get?
So are they not coming in our facility anymore?
What's that?
I said our FedEx truck's not coming in our facility anymore?
No, they are.
Why?
I don't understand your question.
Well, I mean, they hit our damn door, and we're going to have to pay for it.
It wasn't their fault, Chris, it was our employee's fault.
I mean, if there's only two inches of clearance, don't you think that's going to be an issue in the future?
It hasn't been for eight years.
Well, it was now.
When they designed it, they probably should have made it a little bit taller.
If you want to stop trucks coming in there, that's going to be an issue, because that's how we get our food, too, for the jail. So we need to, we're going to need to do another contingency to put in a loading dock for the Cole County Jail.
I understand what...
Seems to me like there is a loading dock.
No, there is not.
No, it all comes in and then goes out the other door. My understanding, it was our fault because we didn't raise the door all the way up, so really, we're the ones that are at fault.
So did you see an accident report, or did we get an accident report, or...
An accident report? I mean, do you want an accident report done any time there's damage to the buildings?
I would think.
Okay. Remember, you asked for that.
Well, I mean...
So if the wall gets scratched, you want an accident report?
I think this was a little bit more...
I think that's...
All right, then give me some, give me some stipulations, what's the, what's the dollar amount that you want? Anything over five hundred dollars damage?
Well, I would say, one, anything that deals with a motor vehicle ought to be reported.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't an accident, though. I mean, it'd be one thing if it was, it was a fault of the driver, he hit the door, but if the door didn't come all the way up and they hit the door, I mean...
I guess I'm having a hard time of, you open the door, it doesn't go all the way open, you stop it before it goes all the way open, or...
Well, what it was, policy was before, but now, the policy's changed, of course, but the driver would pull up, it would get out, and walk up and tell them what they dropped it, how long it'd take or whatever, and then they would go back and get in. So the employee had raised it up enough to let the guy come in, and then when he hit the button to go all the way up, it did not, he didn't wait long enough time for it to go all the way up, he stopped it and the truck came in and hit it.
So when you hit the button, the door doesn't go all the way up?
You would stop it. No, it does not do it that way, it doesn't go all the way up every time you hit the button. And you want to do, if you want to fix that, we can, it's going to cost money through active control, but I can make that edit.
I guess, I quit talking about it.
We can leave it how it is, I'm okay with that. Just remember, anytime we have a damage, we have to call out duly overhead doors from now on for the next three months, we're going to have to come in for an emergency, so if it's a five hundred dollar fix, we're going to have to come in for an emergency fix, because it's duly fixing it, so, because we're at the limit. If you want to leave it the way it is, and if you want to leave it the way it is for the facilities line item, I'm good with that, too. Just know that we'll be back before the end of the year to get more money put in that account, because it's, we run that pretty close to the, to the edge every year. I'm good with however you want to do it, it doesn't bother me a bit, I'm just making sure you guys are aware of it.
No, I'm just upset because it's five thousand dollars, and I mean, you know...
Well, we didn't know what it was going to be when they came to fix it.
Well, I get that, I mean, you had to fix it.
Right.
It was a five thousand dollar fix.
Right.
And that's five grand, that's a lot of money.
Yes, sir, it is.
So I don't, I don't want it, I don't want it to happen again.
We fixed it before when, when we had...
I don't care how many... I don't care how many doors it was.
Yeah, when we had, uh, other trucks, so I think-
Do you wanna stop trucks coming in there? Like I said, I don't have a problem with it. You say the word and I'll, I'll have trucks stop coming in there dropping stuff.
I don't know where they'd unload though, Joe.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get, we're gonna have to build a loading dock of some type to get the food in. Because we, we get sometimes six, six drops a day, depending on how much food they're bringing in, depending on what equipment's coming in.
In my opinion, the door should go all the way up when they hit the button.
That's our procedure now. It's written down that they have to raise the door all the way every time, no matter what.
But they have to hold the button in to do that?
No, they can stop it, but their instruction now is to take it all the way up. If you want me to contact Air Control, I can find out how much money that's gonna be to adjust that so we can raise it, so every time you hit the button, it goes up all the way automatically. You can't stop it.
Well, it's just what I asked you and you said, you hit the button and they can stop it.
Right.
Meaning they have to hit the stop button.
Right.
So when they hit the s- the open button, it does go all the way up?
It will go all the way up, yes, sorry.
So it already does that?
Well, yes, but I can make it where they can't stop it, but that's not a good idea.
I'm not ready to make a transfer as, as of yet.
Okay.
We just, we just approved the budget.
I'm okay with that. We can come back in October or something.
You guys want to, you can, so.
You, I'm fine with it. You wanna leave it the way it is? I'm good with that.
Well, to me, it wasn't an emergency. I mean, I, I got the email, I went over there and it's like, and, you know, that, that's, you've got prisoners coming in and out, you've got all kinds of stuff. I mean, that, that's, the door had to be repaired.
Well, both doors.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, to me, um-
However y'all wanna do it, you sign with me. If you don't wanna declare it, we can, like, come up here. Every time we have an issue with a door, that's good too. It doesn't bother me. I mean, I'm seriously, if, if, that's what you wanna do, I, I'm good with it. I'm just trying to make it easier so I'm not up here all the time.
Well, we do like to see you.
You're up here all the time anyway, John.
Yeah, but usually staggered.
Well, I, I don't think we need to do the transfer yet. We'll just, at the end of the year, if it comes down to it, we're five thousand short, let's do it then. Um, I go back and forth on this one because if it's somebody driving through my garage door, I would think it would be on them to make sure it's open enough, so.
And that, and that individual got this one for?
I, I, well, I don't know whose fault it'd be if you drive through my garage door, whether I opened it or not. I mean, I'd be checking it. I wouldn't trust you to do it.
You're in a tractor trailer, you can't see if that door's all the way open or not. You can't see it?
I, I'm not arguing it today.
That, well, I'm just saying-
I'm gonna pick my arguments on this one. That one, I, I will, again, to you though, if I'm driving through something like that, I'd be making sure that the door was open all the way. I'll guarantee you, he will be from now on, he's gonna get out of the truck and look.
He may.
Yeah, he's, he's delivered before, because I was talking to him.
Probably fired now.
He drops there all the time.
No, he's, he's-
Well, it was an accident. It happened, okay, so no.
So do you want us to start doing accident reports anytime there's damage to the building?
I would probably recommend that we have something. I mean, didn't they drug test him and take him off the road and everything like we have to do with our ambulance drivers?
No, we have no control over what happened to that, that driver. I don't know what procedures. He said he, there was a procedure he had to go through. I don't know what that is. But his supervisor showed up there too.
We need some kind of report on it though, I would think.
So what, uh, what, so I notified all three of you when this occurred, so what do you, what, what kind of accident report do you, do you want a workers' comp report then, every time there's damage to the building?
No, work comp would be involving somebody that got hurt.
Okay, well, okay, so we don't have an accident report for him?
Okay, well, we'll get one.
Okay. And then we will start, and so all of the county's gonna start, anytime there's damage to any of the facilities, we're gonna start doing it. It's not just gonna be Cole County, right? Sheriff's Department?
No, it'll just be you.
See, well, that's not right. But if that's what you want.
It's policy.
Like I said, you're, you're-
No, we'll come up with a-
You're gonna be in-
A minimum amount, but I mean, I don't need to know about a scratch or whatever.
I'm not talking about running buildings. You say anytime damage done to a building. So if someone cuts a corner short and they scratch the side of the wall, is that, is that?
It might be, it might be. Just check them for drugs or if they've been drinking, I don't know.
If that's what you want, I, I, I can do it for you, but you need to give me direction. And we're gonna need an accident report. You need to contact travelers too because it's something that they're gonna be taking, uh, they'll be actually reporting all this information, so.
Well, we don't have to turn it into travelers, I mean-
If it's an accident, you're gonna have to report it.
No, we don't. No, we don't. I mean, if it's an accident on our property and we're not turning it in for a claim.
Okay.
You do not have to turn in everything to your insurance company. That's just plain and simple. I mean, so they would, yeah, if you're in a vehicle accident, you hit somebody else, that's different, but if you run into one of our buildings or whatever and we're gonna pay for the damages, we don't have to turn that into insurance unless we're gonna file a claim. All right?
So on vehicle, on vehicle, uh, accidents then and stuff that we're not gonna turn into insurance, you stood in, that's the one that we're not gonna do the workers' comp report for, but just the, this accident report you're coming up with, is that right?
We have an accident report that already exists. As far as it depends of what the damage is, the dollar amount.
And so, and you're gonna give me that direction on what dollar amount we're talking?
You don't know a dollar amount till you look at it though.
More than likely, sometimes we-
It could be a superficial-
You're open, you're open a Pandora's box is what I'm trying to get at, but if that's what you want me to do-
I can have a bruise on my arm, I might have a fractured bone, you don't know that till you, that's right, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I think we just need to know about it if, I mean, I think that's-
You, you three did know about it?
Yes, sir.
I called, I called up all three.
I wasn't saying we didn't know about, but I'm not arguing that we probably don't need some kind of report, because, I don't know, you said you didn't know about it, Debbie? Because I would've thought that we would've been having it turned into FedEx's insurance. I still say it's their fault, but-
No, no, it was-
It can't be their fault if we don't raise the door.
Who hit the door? That door did not come after that truck. It's an inanimate object comes after this moving vehicle.
Actually, it did.
It's not like a deer ran out in front of it.
The truck went underneath the cab, the, the, the trailers when it hit, so he can't see-
So the door was coming down while he was-
He can't see.
Was the door moving while he was moving?
No, it was stationary.
The door was stationary. So then he hit the door, the door didn't hit him.
The truck.
Thank you.
But it wasn't raised all the way.
Your witness. We could stare all day arguing about it.
We were at fault, but it would be bad when it goes to the, when it goes to, I had to testify that it wasn't their fault.
I didn't say take it to court. I, I'm just saying, I still think it's his fault.
He didn't verify that the door was up high enough.
If you hit a road sign, then it's Public Works' fault for putting a road sign right there in the way.
If he would take over animal control, then, then I would-
All right, I'm done with this one. Just, I think we need to-
So we're not, so if it's not an emergency-
Just let us know and then we'll direct you to make a report.
Okay. I will notify you every time there's, every time there's damage to the building.
Yep, keep sending me emails and I'll come look at it.
If my back's up too far and bumps it with a bumper, I-
Okay. I will let you know.
All right. Just don't, if they scuff the paint, man, I want a report. I want them drug tested, everything.
We do.
All right.
We do that. I'm talking about damage to the building.
I still, I still think it's FedEx's fault.
Well, and I, I, if you want me to, like, if you want me to go out there, well, I got no problem with that.
It was-
I'll send you some guidelines and accident report thing.
Okay, so many guidelines, accident report, and then as long, you guys will-
I, we'll just, yeah, in August or whatever, if you're five thousand short, then we go, I told you always gonna have to do this because it's happened in eighteen, then we-
Okay.
I think we need to take this to people's court. I still think it's FedEx's fault. I'll bet you a dollar.
I agree with you.
Dollar. Put a dollar on it. Get Judge Judy down here or something? All right, you better keep moving because you're gonna lose me on this one. I don't normally argue, but I will argue.
Trail from Fairgrounds Acres into County Park.
Oh, you got to watch all that stuff. They're not even charging you to watch all that.
See, city council's gotta be boring compared to us.
Oh, no, they got selfies.
So here is a, kind of a picture of what we're talking about.
Thanks, sir.
I think Jeff's got those.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So essentially, this is the same thing that we talked about ten months ago, um, and at that point in time, you guys, I think, were, we talked to with Larry and the Parks guys. I think everyone was okay with us building this trail extension. The fold, the photo is old, so actually on the bottom left, uh, there's, there's houses there now. That's the Fairgrounds Acres subdivision. So when we built the subdivision, we built a greenway from the road, I think it's Page Drive or something, um, that would connect down to the property line of the park. And so the idea of building that greenway was that ultimately those folks from the Fairgrounds Acres subdivision could make it into the park. You know, if they made it down to the loop trail around the lake, then ultimately they can make it over to the Greenway Trail and basically downtown. And so, um, at the time, you guys had said that that would be fine, and so we went ahead and designed the project. Um, and then unfortunately, uh, our Parks Commission, uh, had some issues with the funding, and so we're back now looking at the possibility of getting a, a recreational trails grant through Missouri State Parks to do the same thing that we intended to do ten months ago. And so, um, basically the, why we're here is that in order to apply for the grant, um, I would basically need a piece of paper that says that you guys are okay with that. When I was here last time, it was just a verbal agreement and I think everyone agreed that we would build it, uh, our, our Parks Department would maintain it and you guys would just allow it to be there. And so if that's still, uh, what we want to have happen, I think that's fine. We just need to write that down on a piece of paper and have you all sign it. So basically, the stipulation would be that you all, you know, would allow that trail to ma- be maintained for twenty-five years. And, you know, if we can work out the language of exactly how the maintenance would happen, I think the city is happy to fix the panels that they get cracked or push the snow or whatever, um, and basically we just need that in writing.
Yeah, it's contingent on you getting the grant.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you don't get the grant, then you don't know if you'll build it or not, or you may or may not, or if you change your mind in two years and find money, then you'll come up and ask again then, or?
Probably so.
Okay. So is that field, I know that's just a practice field that's down there behind, and I forget what that terrain is like. Does that drop off real hard there? Is that something that they would wanna make that field bigger?
A little bit. It's, it's pretty gradual. It's pretty gradual.
Right, the way we've got it designed, um, I didn't bring the profile, but, uh, as it comes out of the subdivision, you know, we're making a hard ninety to get around the, you know, get around the fence there for the ball field. And it is a little bit steep at the beginning. It's about, uh, I think it's seven and a half percent kind of as you get down the hill, uh, through the first curve, and then it flattens out. Uh, basically, it's about two or three percent the rest of the way down to the existing loop trail around the lake.
My only concern was if they wanna make that other practice field a, an actual field and make it larger. Never had? Okay, I'm fine. That's, that was my one question.
We may wanna look at that currently, even though it's old, that we have with the, these, the park or the ball players. I don't know how big that spot is.
They basically reduce that down to just outside fences, I think.
Yeah, this shouldn't be on that. This should be on our-
They've got the fields.
I think concessions, they have different things.
I was thinking that was laid out somehow as far as the boundaries, wasn't it?
But-
The lease was laid out with the boundaries and stuff and I'm sure where all that.
Yeah.
I think we changed that a little bit when we redid that, didn't we?
Compared what American Legion had, what, uh, Powell's got.
We can double check that. I mean, it won't hurt to, to double check, but-
Yeah.
We can approve it pending review of that.
So David, what, uh, what's the requirements when you get grant money, uh, as far as maintaining the trail and, um?
Right, in this instance, this is a recreational trails grant, and so, um, we have used, the city has gotten this, uh, grant on several different occasions. Um, we've used it to build a greenway, uh, coming from McKay Park up through, I think it's the Christian Church there on Southwest Boulevard. It ties in kind of where the, the South Campus of Kappa Region is. Um, we've also used it, uh, for part of the trail that goes underneath the Highway one seventy-nine there off of Frog Hollow. Uh, I think we've used that, uh, a couple of occasions. And so for the city, we've always built them, you know, as concrete trails kind of along our standard, uh, greenway specs. Um, but the grant itself is actually much broader than that. I mean, you could build a, you know, a single track dirt trail for mountain biking or just general hiking. You know, you could build equestrian trails. You could build ATV trails with this money. Um, so they wouldn't necessarily have to be paved, uh, in any fashion in order to use this grant. And so, uh, in terms of the maintenance, you know, I think our Parks Department, you know, typically goes out and plows the snow on them, although the grant actually wouldn't require there to be any of that type of maintenance on the trail.
Okay. Cause I know you have, uh, trails along, uh, County Park Road.
Mm-hmm.
And then do we own the trail, goes across the bridge, or-
Across the dam.
Across the dam, and then they pick up after that, so.
Right down by the little cover bridge.
And then we don't typically, we don't typically do any snow removal on, uh, County Park at all.
We don't.
We need to put some of those scooters.
Oh, yeah, that'd be nice.
No.
That's not inside city limits, though, is it?
Uh, it isn't, and I'm not entirely sure. The, the scooters and the bikes both actually have some GPS stuff on them that- Right, geo fences, so that if you go beyond where you're supposed to go, ultimately, they will, uh, not allow you to rent them again. So, yeah, yeah. To Alex, uh, one of our guys in our campo, he rode out to the county fair and couldn't ride back.
He was on foot, running way back on it.
We, we don't want them out in the county. That's my excuse is, you know, it's like, Jeff City's fine, but I've never seen anybody ride one out to Wardsville or Saint Martins.
Right, yeah.
We don't, we don't wanna encourage that.
They've built the fence somewhere between there. I'm not for sure exactly where it is.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm good with getting you a letter if we can just check out the lease with Powell and anyway. So, you need something today or?
Uh, no, I mean, I don't know if you would like, I could draft up some language or if you all, you know, I don't know who would want to sort of write the body of the letter, but I could get that information to you or?
Say if you write up a draft, we'll get a Jill letter and they could do it.
Okay. That'll be fine. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, David.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We need to bring it back or can we just send it to you or?
Uh, we probably oughta have a motion to sign it then once we review it, so we could do that next week.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. All right, thank you all.
All right, thanks, David.
Yeah, we just need to look at the boundaries and that, because this is crossing some of the boundaries.
I don't think that this, that's addressed. Let me look at Chris's.
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks, David.
We have anything else before we go into closed session?
I thought there was something else on the agenda that I saw the other day. Seems like the agenda that I get.
Um, we had Donnell's thing on there, but-
I don't-
Brian is the computer.
But that was taken off, right?
No, that's a different.
So discussion of computer equipment for court administrator?
That's not on-
It's not on?
That's on mine.
I took it off.
Okay.
Personnel and Brian's computer network.
Donnell's got her situation all squared away, so we're good.
Okay. I did receive a letter from Missouri Department Conservation. Uh, they've identified needs in developing services. Basically, I thought was interesting is we have two hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred and eleven acres in Cole County and Conservation has four thousand eight hundred forty-six point forty-four acres is public land, so they're just kinda letting us know.
I thought it'd been more than that.
You have a copy of that. I, I already gave you a copy with, uh, those other ones I signed.
I thought Marion Bottoms was about three thousand acres.
They're saying it's public, uh, acres held in public trust by the Conservation Department is four thousand eight hundred forty-six point forty-four acres.
So some of it may be considered core even though Conservation manages it or something.
And the number of Conservation Department employees domiciled within the county are four hundred and seventy-seven, so that's kinda interesting.
Jeff? Can't hardly stand all the fiber having.
So we're not doing closed, or we are?
Yeah, we're doing closed.
I guess.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, I have a meeting with Matt David in MoDOT on Clark Avenue interchange.
Thanks, Tammy.
The intersection of High Street. We'd like, they'd like to come up and present what the latest plan is on that, not next week, but the week after, is that okay to put on the internet?
As long as we got High Street.
We're writing, writing it in the paper, yeah, so.
Yeah, as long as we keep High Street before.
It is.
Well, are they, High? Yeah, and we can talk about it in twenty twenty-five. Start talking about it.
You're talking about the roundabout.
Yeah.
Right?
Something they want to do, the ramped out intersection stuff, whatever.
Yeah. I think we were talking about that before. I just, that's the first time I'd heard anything in a long time about it, and I had to read in the newspaper, so, kind of hurt my feelings.
Surprise a little bit too, so.
I was saddened. I got overtaken.
What, what are they wanting to talk about? So are they wanting, wanting to start design, or?
The study's essentially done. You know, not really issues with MoDOT, but MoDOT has any funding to do with the interchange. So, what the city would like to do is just proceed with the intersection project. Kind of goes back to a little bit of Lake Chestnut Street issue that the campus has been working through, so it all ties in together with that, but they just want to move forward with that part of it. But the interchange, and that's, that's funding available, and possibly a cost share in the next step.
What's that other one that comes up from Highway Patrol? That hour road?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be addressed with the inter, interchange.
So they're just gonna try to catch both of them in this?
And then that would be the issue, that's, that's the MoDOT interchange, just to be done with the interchange. This would just be the intersection.
They had looked at them back when we were doing all the fifty, and they didn't have the money then.
It's basically the.
It don't take much money to close it off.
Well, yeah, that, that would be a nice idea to do, but MoDOT.
Yeah, that's fine. It's their road. I'll let them deal with it.
I think they were talking around about there too. Coming right off of fifty, and then you enter a roundabout, which, I don't know what the schools and everything else, I don't.
It's not ours, so there's not really a whole lot we can do with it, so. I was just asking. I know that it's more of a deal with Chestnut too, them giving it up.
Yeah, we're staying out of that.
So.
So this, the roundabout would be addressed in the nail, next sales tax?
This sales tax, it would be like a twenty, twenty twenty-five, I think. Or nineteen, so we're in the third year, so we have twenty, or twenty-one, twenty-one with the MSP, whatever that turns into.
I'm just concerned that, once we start design, that we may not have funding to, to build it, and so, I, I'm not gonna approve design. When we may not have funding for it, because you never know what voters are gonna approve in the next sales tax, and they may not, may not even approve the sales tax at all, so.
I'll go with David and Matt note, I, my understanding is that if it's on and it's built, they have money for, I think there is money. Kind of geared towards that area in the sales tax, I think, if that would cover it, but they'll just have to go back and see, make sure the money is there. MSP, I think there was two around, I hope there's two, maybe it's just a million or four.
I just, so I'll say it again, I mean, we have a project sitting out there that's been designed for seven or eight years, it's ready to go, and yet, the project hasn't been built. So. Well, okay. So, I'm not gonna design a project that we don't have funding to build, so, you know, if it's two years out, we got several projects that they're wanting to do, Dunkland, High. I mean, we gotta get those done, because what happens if something comes up and that costs a lot more? Then what are we gonna do? Now we're gonna have another project sitting at design that can't be built.
High Street's gotta be done, and I think Dunkland, they're, they're saying is almost an emergency, so.
Right, so.
I think we need, yeah.
Both, both those have to be done, but yet, design's not done, those aren't out for bid, we don't know what the cost is, or could be overruns on both, and. I mean, sometimes you just don't know what you're gonna get into, and we've been lucky so far, but. Could have something major that happens, or it could be some road that has to be fixed because of an emergency or something, and what are you gonna do? So.
Well, I'll, I'll let them know that they need to be prepared to discuss, but to make sure funding is there.
Dunkland, I don't, Dunkland wasn't on our five-year plan, was it? So, that's.
I think that it, it was as a whole, Dunkland as it ties into the larger more car, but the whole.
Yeah, yeah, there, but I'm talking about the bridge.
Oh, the bridge?
The bridge, that wasn't in our five-year plan.
I think it was. Maybe that was, yeah, I identified it in one of those categories.
Obviously, it wasn't, because there's been issues with that bridge, like, for a long, long time.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was, I mean.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just, but.
We'll have an answer.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that, that I think is gonna be, High Street needs to be done, and then I think my understanding is that that bridge down on Dunkland is the next high priority, so.
It's gonna go this year.
Yeah, so, yeah, we do need to see if our money's gonna, gonna hold out.
Well, you could have an economic development project that comes in too, that they need infrastructure, and you gotta move some money to take care of something, so, a lot of things could happen, so. Just don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. Anything else? All right, I may be going to closed session for section six, ten point oh two one of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues, sub thirteen. All right? Is that it? We doing the network?
Yeah, thirteen, what, yeah.
We doing the computer stuff too?
Yeah, but I, Brian needs.
Yeah, we'll do that with Brian.
And, and computer network. Operational information, sub twenty-one.
Yeah.
Second roll call.
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Okay.